Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this virtual edition of the Montgomery Township Board of Supervisors meeting. We are meeting virtually this evening on February 22 of 2021 due to the inclement weather. I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we'll begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I introduced myself there at the beginning. My name is Tanya Banford, and I am the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Right now, I'm going to turn it over to Deb Rivas, who is our Recording Secretary, and she is going to conduct our roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. At this time, I'll take the roll call for the Board of Supervisors meeting of February 22. Chair, Tanya Banford?
Present.
Vice Chair, Matt Quigg?
Present.
Supervisor, Candace Chimera?
Present.
Supervisor, Annette Long?
Present.
Supervisor, Beth Staub?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Agenda item number three is public comment. When we advertised that we would be conducting the meeting today virtually, we did post an email where you could send public comment, and there is also a chat feature here in this meeting. Do we have any public comment at this time, Deb?
We do not have any public comment at this time.
Okay. Well, then, we're going to move on to agenda item number four, which is announcements. We don't have many announcements right now, except that what we did have, quite a snowfall today, was unanticipated in terms of how much accumulating snow we had. And thanks going out to our Public Works Department, of course, for all of their hard work in getting things cleared away, because it was quite unanticipated. We were only expecting to have a coating to an inch of snow and then followed by some rain. So, how many inches did we wind up getting? I think it was four. Anybody have an official count?
I think we're close to five.
Close to five, wow. Well, anyway, great job scrambling to mobilize and get all of our roads cleared. So I just want to remind all of our residents out there who may be listening that you have 24 hours to clear your sidewalks, and let's make sure that we do that to keep our sidewalks clear and safe for all of our fellow neighbors. I'd also like to share that Montgomery Township is hiring. There are a variety of different employment opportunities currently with the township, and we offer a wonderful benefits package. So I encourage you, if you are seeking employment right now and you'd like to work for a wonderful employer, please check out our website for more information, and you can find that at Next, we're going to move on to agenda item number five, which is the announcement of executive session, and I'll turn it over to Solicitor Sean Kilkeny.
Thank you very much, Chair Banford. This evening, the Board of Supervisors met in executive session at 6:15 PM to discuss two matters of personnel and a matter of litigation. This executive session complied with the Sunshine Law and the Open Meetings Law of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Solicitor. Moving on to agenda item six, this is the consent agenda. We need to consider the approval of the minutes for February 8, 2021. So moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next, we need to consider the payment of bills. I'll move that we pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Originally, we were intending to appoint the members of our Human Relations Commission today, but unfortunately, when we had to transition to a virtual format, that really doesn't facilitate being able to swear to people inappropriately. So we're going to table that agenda item until our next meeting. So we'll move on to agenda item number eight, which is public works. And the first item up is to consider the award of the contract for the 2021 curb and sidewalk project. I'll turn it over to Greg Reif, our Public Works Director.
Okay, thank you. The township received bids, and we opened the bids. We utilized Penn Bids on February 11 at the Township Building. Gilmore and Associates, the Township Engineer, reviewed 10 bids ranging from $59,000 to $492,000, or $59,492 up to $185,843.80. They recommended awarding the bid to Drumheller Construction. They were the lowest responsible bidder of $59,492. Tabulation sheet is in your packet. The board authorized the advertisement of the bid at the meeting of January 25. The budget impact, the 2021 adopted budget includes $154,000 in the Capital Reserve Fund for the project. It would be our recommendation to award the bid to Drumheller Construction, who was the lowest responsible bidder.
Any questions for Greg? Hearing none, I'll move that we award the contract for the 2021 curb and sidewalk project to Drumheller Construction Company, Inc., the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $59,492, per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Agenda item number nine, consider award of contract for the 2021 in-place paving project. Greg Reif?
Okay, again, we used Penn Bids at the Township Building on February 11. We used, Gilmore and Associates also reviewed nine bids ranging from $429,493.32 to $759,295.23. They are recommending we award the bid to Alan Myers, who was the lowest responsible bidder. Again, the tabulation sheets are in your packet. It was also authorized, the advertisement of the bid at the public meeting of January 25. The 2021 adopted budget includes $650,000 in the state liquid fuels fund for this project, so it would be our recommendation to award the bid to Alan Myers.
Any questions for Greg on this one? Hearing none, I'll move that we award the contract for the 2021 in-place paving project to Alan Myers LP, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $429,493.32, per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Engineer. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Final item for Greg, agenda item number 10, consider the authorization to purchase wheel balancer.
Okay, in 2021, we were scheduled to replace a wheel balancer. It'd be our recommendation to purchase a Hunter Smartweight Touch Balancer as a 2021 final budget. The quote is dated February 11 of '21 from Mohawk Resources, and they are an authorized vendor under CoStar's Cooperative Purchase Program. The total price is $9,818.18, and it does meet the specifications. We did budget a total of $10,000 for 2021 for that. So it would be our recommendation, again, if we could purchase that under the CoStar's agreement.
Thanks, Greg. Any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, I'll move that we award the contract for the purchase of one 2021 Hunter Smartweight Touch Balancer from Mohawk Resources LTD, an authorized vendor under the CoStar's Cooperative Purchase Program, at a total cost of $9,818.18, per their quote dated February 11, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next session, a section of the agenda are topics for planning and zoning. Bruce Shoup, our Director of Planning, could not be here this evening, and so these agenda items are going to be fielded by Solicitor Sean Kilkeny.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead. Go ahead, take it over, Sean.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair Banford. The first, the first agenda item we have is related to, is related to a land development waiver for 425 Stump Road, which involves a new access ramp to the real, to the back part of the property. We received a letter from Kristen Bianzio of Hamburg Rubin. Staff has reviewed this request for waiver of land development, including our Township Engineer, Jim Doherty, and he had no objections, but it's my understanding Ms. Bianzio was here to make a brief presentation.
Thank you. I won't hold you up, and I am thankful for the snow and being at home tonight with you guys, I have to say. So 425 Stump Road Associates owns the property. My client is Craig Malagrano. He's here on, on the phone. He is taking over half of the building, and I know you guys have seen the work that's been going on there. He's putting millions of dollars into this building because it's the home of his company, PDM, who's occupying half the space. The other half is being leased to Mid-Atlantic. One of your existing business owners on Stump Road across the street is actually expanding and getting into the, the printing business, and this is an expansion of their business right across the street, still in your township, which is nice, for a printing facility. They're printing high-quality glossy items for displays and Amazon packaging and the like. So that entails an $8 million printer from Germany that we need to get in the building, and there's absolutely no way to get it in the building without building this ramp. So that's the proposal. It's on existing and purvious coverage, so we thought this was relatively simple. We will comply with any recommendations from staff or the fire marshal relative to access. We can make any modifications that they request. So keeping it simple for you guys, that's the basis of our request. Tim Woodrow, our engineer, is also here. I got a little lesson on why we need ramps and can't use forklifts and things like that for, for equipment like this, and how all industrial buildings that are being spec today all include a ramp so that heavy equipment can be moved inside the building and can't be lifted. So that's the case we have here.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board, or do you feel like we can move on this one?
No, makes sense.
Sounds like a great thing to have in our community.
Yeah, and it's the recommendation of the engineer and the fire department that, you know, we move forward on this. I don't see any reason to object.
Glad to keep the business in Montgomery Township as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems they're really putting their roots in by adding this expansion, so that's good news.
That's wonderful. All right, thank you for your presentation. I'll go ahead and make a motion to authorize the waiver of formal land development requirements for the construction of the access ramp based on a review of the Township Engineer and the Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you very much. Time to shuffle, we'll have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, Sean, agenda item 12, consider escrow release and commencement of the maintenance period for the Nissan dealership.
I believe this one Carolyn is taking. Is that correct, Carolyn, on the escrow release?
Yes, I can do that one, thank you. Good evening, everyone. In your packet, you have a request for an escrow release by 309 Auto Mall Properties LP, Montgomeryville Nissan. It has been reviewed and recommended by the Township Engineer. The amount of the escrow request is $369,570.50. We are also asking to commence the maintenance period for this project, and it would leave a maintenance security in the amount of $61,647.62. Anyone who's been by the project can see it's completed, and they really, they really did a nice job on that corner.
Any questions from the board? All right, I'll move that we authorize a construction escrow release, number four, in the amount of $369,570.50, as recommended by the Township Engineer for the 309 Auto Mall Properties LP, Montgomeryville Nissan, contingent upon the developer satisfying all outstanding township invoices related to this project and receipt of an approved maintenance security by the Township Solicitor in the amount of $61,647.62. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, Solicitor.
Yeah, Chair Banford, I believe we have before you some summaries of zoning hearing applications that'll come before the zoning hearing board on March 3, 2021. Usually, the, the Board of Supervisors, unless there is an issue of a particular note, either for or to oppose, ends up usually staying neutral on most, most of these. But what I will do is I will give a summary of the, of the four applications and see what the board's pleasure is. So the, the first application relates to 108 Major Drive, and the applicants own and occupy a single-family home located at that property. The 25,000 square foot property sits within the R1 Cluster Zoning District. It's a street corner property with the home facing major drive and a side property along Buckingham Lane. Approximately half of the rear yard consists of wetlands. The applicants are constructing an in-ground swimming pool on the property with a six-foot solid fence enclosing the side in the rear yards. The applicant requests a variance from the provisions, Section 230, 148B, 2C of the zoning code of Montgomery Township, to install a six-foot solid fence 12 feet from the edge of Buckingham Lane, rather than the 27 that is required by your ordinance. Number two is the application for 411 Doylestown Road. The applicant is the owner of a 7.8 acre parcel located at 411 Doylestown Road within the S Dropping Center Zoning District. The property is currently improved with 67,196 square foot, one-story building with associated parking and drive aisles. The applicant, the applicant is requesting a variance from the provisions of Section 230, 156, JC5 of the zoning code of Montgomery Township, to allow a proposed outdoor playground area for a future daycare center in the side yard of the property, rather than in the rear yard that is required. Three is 801 and 805 Horsham Roads, the Adams Montgomery Association and BAG Associates. The Adams Montgomery Association is the owner of the 1.102 acre property located at 801 Horsham Road, bounded by Horsham Road and Doylestown Road. BAG Associates is the owner of a 30,400 square foot property located at 805 Horsham Road, bounded by Horsham Road. Both properties sit within the C Commercial zoning district. The properties are adjacent and contain retail uses totaling approximately 15,400 square feet of the building area. The properties share parking. The properties initially had 96 parking spaces. Over the years, road widening and other improvements have resulted in portions of the properties being taken, and the property reduced to 69 parking spaces. PennDOT is proposing additional improvements that will further reduce the parking spaces to 66. The co-applicants seek relief from the following requirements of the Code of Montgomery Township in order to allow 66 parking spaces and nine by 18 feet in size, where in, where a minimum of 100 parking spaces and 10 by 20 feet is what is required. And so they're asking for a special exception to permit shared parking together with a 25% reduction, which would require a total of 75 parking spaces. They're allow, in the alternative, they're allowing a variance to allow 66 parking spaces and a variance to allow nine by 18-foot parking spaces. And then finally, application of Toll Brothers at 101, 103, 105, and 107, Windstone Court. Toll Brothers, Inc. is the property and developer of the properties located off of Bethlehem Pike within the Walnut Creek Development. Phase two of the project consists of 148 townhomes constructed or under construction. The applicant requests a variance from the provisions of 235B of the Montgomery Township Zoning Code in order to construct decks within 55-foot wide buffer area in the area of the homes. And those, that's the summary of the four zoning applications scheduled for early March and from the zoning hearing board. Wanted to see if the Board of Supervisors had any questions or would consider taking on a position on any of these applications, Chair Banford.
Thank you, Solicitor Kilkeny. To my fellow board members, does anybody have any feedback on any of these zoning hearing applications that they'd like to share right now for us to consider?
I do not.
No? Then my recommendation would be that we remain neutral and allow the zoning hearing board to hear these applicants. Okay?
Yes.
All right, sounds good.
Sounds good. Thank you, Solicitor. Moving on to agenda item 14, we're going to consider the approval of the Constellation Energy Agreement for Electric Generation, Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you. The township has previously utilized Pennsylvania Municipal League's Municipal Utility Alliance Program to procure energy rates because of the fact that we can get our generation from a firm other than PICO. Previously, the board authorized the township to execute a contract with Constellation Energy, which was the lowest responsible bidder under the MUA's procurement practice, and the contract expired in December. We've contacted Constellation to procure new rates, and we've also requested that the rate quote they give us be for 100% green electric generation. So based on the initial pricing, as compared to the rates in 2017, we would actually realize an additional reduction in cost. And given the current climate and the uncertainty in the energy field, staff is recommending that we enter into a five-year agreement with Constellation for our electric generation and that it be 100% green.
That's fantastic. I'm excited to hear that. Any questions from the board?
No.
That's awesome. And if I could, I'd just like to thank our Finance Director, Brian Shapiro, for working with Constellation, getting daily quotes from them. Actually, the quote that we got today actually went down a little bit from Friday, so we're hoping that tomorrow, when we notify them, it might be down a little more, but we just think the safe bet is to lock in for five years.
I agree. And so, well done, and please share our thanks to Brian for his work there. Okay, so I'll move that we approve the execution of a contract with Constellation Energy for electrical energy supply for a five-year period for the township buildings and the township streetlights, and authorize the Township Manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Agenda item 15, consider authorization to participate in the Montgomery County Consortium Fuel Bid. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Staff is recommending that the board give consideration to allowing the township to join the current consortium fuel bid and to participate in future bids with them. And the reason we're asking you this now, even though our agreement is not going to expire until June, we would really like to get on a pattern of where housekeeping matters like this, bids that are coming up for renewal, will be done in January and February before the real earnest business of the township takes over, similar to how we do our, our bids for our paving, our curb and sidewalk, you know, anything that is of that magnitude that we would just start adding it in the beginning of the year. So in the past, the consortium has released a bid for fuel purchase in May of 2020 for the period of September 1 to August 31, and 15 municipalities participate in that bid. And the bid document does actually include provisions for other members of the consortium to purchase fuel during the term of the contract at the same bid price. So tonight, we're asking you to author, to recommend our authorization to join the consortium fuel bid and to participate in future fuel bids.
Any questions for Carolyn? Okay. I'll move that we authorize Montgomery Township to participate in the Montgomery County Consortium Fuel Bid and authorize the Township Manager to execute all documents on behalf of the township. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Agenda item 16, consider issuance of request for proposal, RFP, for investment consultant. Carolyn McCreary, Township Manager.
Thank you. So you'll recall last year, the board authorized the staff to go ahead and put an RFP together for our non-uniform pension plan, as well as our 457 plan. Those are both defined contribution plans. In preparation, after that changeover for the police pension meeting, we were doing some research, and we discovered that we have not gone out for an RFP since 2006, when we chose Citigroup Global Markets. They in turn merged with Morgan Stanley Wealth Management, and while the plan is doing exceptionally well, as part of our due diligence, staff would like board authorization to go out for a request for proposal to see if we can, just like we did with the non-uniform plan, get better fees, get more investment options, you know, again, in this case, regardless of how the plan performs, what kind of state aid we get, the township is ultimately responsible to pay the future benefits of this plan. So it behooves us to make sure that we are in fact doing our due diligence on it.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No. Thanks, Carolyn.
All right. I'll move that we authorize the Township Manager to prepare and distribute a request for proposal for investment consultant services for the police pension fund. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, moving on to agenda items 17, consider adoption of resolution to extend participation in the Wissahickin Clean Water Partnership Intergovernmental Agreement. Carolyn McCreary.
So as the board knows, we were one of the founding municipalities in this intergovernmental agreement. We are still working to put together an alternative TMDL plan that is satisfactory to both EPA and DEP. On January of last year, the board adopted a resolution which would extend our participation in the group through March 31, 2021. And again, housekeeping, rather than wait till March and hope that we remember for our March meeting, we want to bring it to you tonight, and we are seeking you authorization to allow our continued participation in that partnership and to adopt Resolution 2021-18.
Do we need to read this entire resolution, Carolyn?
No, you do not. You can read the first paragraph, which is right above the municipality names, unless you would like me to read it. I have it in front of me.
Oh, I have it. I, I just, I didn't know how much of this really had to be read.
Nope, just that top part is fine.
All right, any questions for Carolyn on this from the board?
No. Happy to continue.
I'll move that we, well, it says, "A resolution to authorize." Make a resolution to authorize an extension of the 2018-2019 Intergovernmental Agreement with other Montgomery and Philadelphia County municipalities and wastewater treatment plant operators to complete a water quality improvement plan as an alternative to the EPA phosphorus total maximum daily load for the Wissahickin Creek watershed, as outlined. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. I'll move on to other business and department reports. The township staff have prepared reports for the month of January, and at this time, do our board members have any questions for any of the department heads who are present? We've got Greg Reif here, I can see, our fire chief, Bill Wegman is here. Any questions for any of our department heads? Any questions for any of our department heads? No? Yeah? Okay, you got off easy, guys. Committee and liaison reports. Moving on, so all of our, all of our supervisors on the board, our liaisons to committees that meet on a regular basis, I think I might be the only person who has a committee report, but I just want to throw it out to, to anybody else who'd like to jump in with a report of their own. Anyone? Well, I will report that I was present at the latest sewer authority board meeting, and I'm the liaison to Montgomery Township's municipal sewer authority. And they gave a very interesting presentation on their GIS system, and I thought I'd share a couple of facts and figures for you for the general interest. What's wonderful about this GIS system is that they are able to map out our township and all the sewer pipe and all the manhole covers and all the different parcels of property throughout the township, and they have these layers and filters that they can run. So on, and on a map, they can show you with a click of a button, anything that you need to know along those lines. So if you're looking to see how many residential parcels are, you know, present here in our township, they can tell you exactly how many of each type. For instance, there are 10,245 parcels total in the township, and they can actually parse those out by size, like 767 are one-acre-plus parcels, and 29 of those are five acres plus. Why do we want to keep track of those parcels that are five acres or more? Anyone? Because those, you know, potentially could become developments, developed for, for multiple housing uses, hopefully, you know, given how much development we have in the township, that won't be the case, but it's certainly something that we need to be aware of. It's a possibility down the road. There are approximately, let's see, how many? 9,600 of those parcels are residential. So if you're ever curious to know how many other parcels, you know, we have as residences as a part of the township, but the 10,245, 9,600, so it's majority, vast majority are residential, but we have 286 that are commercial, 181 that are exempt, that would include churches and things. So all this information, oh, and 129 industrial. So I thought you'd just find that really interesting. We know now that there are 3,192 manholes and that there's 108.81 miles of sewer pipe.
People can sleep better tonight.
I'm such a data nerd, I'm sorry, but I just, I find it very fascinating. I know, I'm just blowing with this information, aren't I? I just really enjoyed learning that about our township, and I hope you did too. And that is the benefit of having that kind of a system where we can at a glance find out what we need to know about our, our area and our community that we live in. So one of the other things that was shared at the sewer authority meeting was the latest Biobot study, because we are measuring the presence of COVID-19 in our wastewater at the Eureka Plant, and they were able to share that our numbers are going back down nicely, which is encouraging. However, they did point out that the virus is still very much present in our community and is spreading throughout our community at an estimated rate of five new cases per day. So we want to encourage everyone to please, please wear a mask whenever you're out and about in the community, and be sure to socially distance whenever you're around other people, especially people who aren't members of your immediate family. We have had 39 deaths in our township to date since the beginning of this pandemic. So 39 of our neighbors have passed away, so please take this seriously. This is a matter of life or death, and be sure to mask up and take care of yourself and others. If you are interested in any information about getting tested or being vaccinated against COVID-19, be sure to visit our website at montgomerytp.org. We update that website constantly with new information as it becomes available about testing sites as well as available vaccines. And that concludes my report. Is there any other business to come before the board at this time? All right, hearing none, I will move that we adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Good night.
Night, everybody.